I would like to call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, March 19th. If I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Alright, I'm sure everybody remembers the Mitt Romney event, that was last night. Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. This is, I think this is a record crowd. Can anybody dispute that? So, welcome, everybody. I'm glad you're here for the next couple of hours with us. Alright, first of all, let me just ask for a roll call, please.
Steven Arthur?
Here.
And Babsen?
Here.
And Alex Dellicoli?
Here.
Zachary?
Here.
Karen Lundstedt?
Here.
Alan Maurer?
Here.
Bill Radsor?
Here. Okay, everyone's present. Our agenda this evening, we have a number of recognition events. First, we will approve an agreement between the school district and the Vernon Hills Park District because of their contributions to our Project Turf. They're also here so that we can recognize the great effort that they've put forth for that important program for us. We have some students from both high schools we want to recognize. I suspect that's why the vast majority of you are here tonight. We also have some staff members that we want to recognize, and there's a Mastery Manager presentation. We'll have a brief president's report. We'll have reports from our student school board representatives from both high schools. We'll have an update from our superintendent. We'll approve the consent vote agenda, review a number of items on both the Program and Personnel Committee and the Facilities and Finance Committee. There will be no property update. We'll ask for an update on Special Education District of Lake County. There's nothing new from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and then we will be convening an executive session this evening to review collective negotiating matters. However, we will not be taking any action following that executive session tonight. Alright? Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Lee, who will talk a little bit about the Vernon Hills Park District and their contributions to our Project Turf.
Well, good evening. First, one of the hallmarks of this district is our partnerships in all of the communities that we serve and between our two high schools. If you look around the district, you will see a number of joint projects that have been worked on by the schools and parents and the district and parents for the betterment of our students and our overall community. As many of you are aware, we have been working with the folks in Vernon Hills and at Vernon Hills High School to coordinate efforts to share costs on replacing the grass football field at Vernon Hills High School with field turf or permanent turf, which would make that space, a space that can be used 365 days a year virtually in any kind of weather and for long periods of time without damaging the field. So, it goes from being a football, soccer, maybe lacrosse field, to being also serving any of the athletics that we have at the high school, physical educations classes, the band, and also potential to work with the community moving forward. To that end, there is a Project Turf Committee through Vernon Hills High School and the village of Vernon Hills, and they have worked diligently over the last year to raise funds for this project that will be in the range of $900,000 to $1 million, depending on cost for drainage, those types of things. That is a substantial cost, but I do want to frame out tonight that Libertyville High School last year was able to use their all-purpose field there over 1,000 times, and at Vernon Hills, because we have a grass field, they were able to use it in the neighborhood of 35 or 36 times. So, the cost per use of an all-weather, all-purpose field, the extended use possibilities that provides, and its length of service makes it a wise investment to move forward. So, over the past few months, as they've raised funds, we have a number of people that have contributed to that project, and the cost breakdown so far is the Board of Education is going to donate or add $300,000 to the project. That would be the approximate cost of redoing the drainage and laying a new grass field at Vernon Hills High School. The Vernon Hills Park District has made a substantial contribution of $100,000, we're going to recognize that, tonight. The Cougar Athletic Boosters have pledged $100,000. VHHS vendor contracts, such as our Pepsi contract and water, those kinds of things, will produce another $100,000 worth of project. Family and individuals have contributed a little over $51,000. Area businesses have contributed $29,600, and the Cougar Council has pledged $10,000 to the project. So, that brings us to a subtotal of $390,680. Along with the Board's contribution of $300,000, that brings us to roughly $690,680. The balance of the project, contributions that need to be made to fill in the void, some of you are aware that we have cell towers behind Vernon Hills High School. That money from the beginning of the athletic complex in the back was designated to do field and facility upgrades. So, over the course of the next few years, essentially, we will use all the cell tower revenue to make up the difference in the project. And I want to point out that that is non-taxpayer money. It is money that's generated from simply hosting those cell towers on our property, and that produces revenue of approximately $30,000 a year. So, this is a great community effort at a really needed project at Vernon Hills High School. So, that is kind of the background of the project. We have worked very closely with the Vernon Hills Park District, who first approached Dr. Schwick at Vernon Hills and then me about potentially partnering in this process. And over the course of the last few months, we have worked on an intergovernmental agreement that would see the Park District grant us an unbelievable $100,000 contribution towards this project. In return, we will provide the Park District with 24 Sundays, 12 in the fall and 12 in the spring, and then some additional Friday afternoons in the summer when they are running youth camps to have kind of penultimate activities up on the big field at the high school. In the world that we live in today, it is very important that we continue to pursue intergovernmental agreement and cost-sharing possibilities. The district and our local governments have been very aggressive in doing that. You can feel very confident that we're going to continue to do that. But through the vision of the Vernon Hills Park District Board, Jeff Fujiru, Sir Executive Director, our Board, and Dr. Schwick and her staff, we're able to create this agreement. So, the first thing I'm going to ask the Board to do tonight is we are recommending that we adopt the intergovernmental agreement with the Vernon Hills Park District for the contribution and use in kind for the Vernon Hills athletic and multipurpose field. So, we would entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion that we approve the Vernon Hills Park District Field Turf Agreement.
I second. Any discussion? Excuse me, roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Babsen?
Aye.
Dellicoli?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Maurer?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Congratulations and thank you very much.
(Applause). At this time, we'd like, we have several members of the Vernon Hills Park District Board here, as well as Jeff Fujiru, Sir Executive Director, tonight. So, as I call you, if you would come up and stand by the podium, we would like to thank you for your contribution, take a few pictures, and I think you have something to present to us. So, first of all, let me introduce Bruce Robbins, who's a Commissioner. So, Bruce, if you would please come up. Jim Baloo, who's Vice President of the Board. Dave Dewerhofer, who's President of the Board, and Jeff Fujiru, Sir Executive Director. And so, Pat and I are going to come up front with you and accept what you have to give to us. Dave, thank you. Thank you very much for...
(Applause).
Oh, Brian, come on. Yep. Yep. Anybody else? Thank you, guys. Thank you all very much. Thanks. Thank you very much. I just want to point, $100,000, that's what it looks like. (Applause). Well, first, we want to thank Ryan McDonald for his work on this as the Athletic Director at Vernon Hills High School. Ryan has spent lots of time working with the Park District and all the volunteers in this project, just amazing work, Ryan. So, thank you. And then, we want to give a special thanks tonight, Dennis, why don't you turn on a face? We want to give a special thanks tonight to Dennis Donlin. Dennis was the Chair of this project, and I think we can all tell you that we've seen Dennis everywhere many times, doing multiple things on one evening, and we are so appreciative for the leadership that we have in all of our communities, and Dennis is an exemplar of this. And this project would not be moving forward without his hard work on this. So, Dennis, on behalf of our Board, we want to recognize you for dedicating your time and effort to make Project Turf a success for Vernon Hills High School, and this is a small token of our appreciation. So, there you go. (Applause). Pat, you want to say anything else?
No, I'll just add to that, that you to me are shining examples. I remember reaching closer once, one of those motivational classes, never doubt that, never, something they said, that never doubt that a small number of people can change the world because in fact, that's the only group that ever has. And I think in your case, never doubt that a single citizen in this community is to take on a project of very large magnitude and make it happen because of their soul-hearted dedication to rally everyone else in the community. And I think you provide a great example for all of us. I just want to say thanks very much.
With that, okay. So, moving on, tonight we have the wonderful opportunity to recognize a number of our Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School students. So, I will turn that over to...
We'll start with me. First of all, it's very exciting, and one of the most enjoyable things that we do is to recognize our students when they do good things, academically, in student activities, in the fine arts, in community service, and tonight's no different. And we are going to recognize a number of students tonight who have received a state recognition in a variety of activities. So, we're very excited to do that. Thank you for all coming, and before you all leave tonight, please stay because we want to give you a big round of applause for the work that you've done with your young people. So, without further ado, Al, I'm going to turn it over to you and Marina and Ellen.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming. I'd like to begin by introducing our boys head swim coach at Libertyville, Kevin Zetchevsky. And I can if you can come forward. Kevin's entering his fourth season as boys head swimming coach. He's a 2000 Stevenson grad, where he was an All-American swimmer and water polo player. He's also a three-time All-American swimmer at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and he qualified for the 2008 Olympic Trials in the 100-meter and 200-meter breaststroke. I say all that because I want you to know, in this district, how well-qualified our coaches are. But he's not only well-qualified with his swim expertise, also in the leadership development of our athletes. And he's here tonight, and just to show you a little bit about what happened this year, he had seven swimmers qualifying in eight events for the state meet, relay, and five individual events. So, that's quite an accomplishment in itself. We have a state medal winner that he'd like to introduce tonight, and I'm going to let him do that.
Thank you, Dr. Scott, and thank you, Board, for letting us come here and for the recognition. I wouldn't say this is just a recognition for me and my athlete, but also our sport. Only once every four years, our sport gets recognized in the world as the best sport in the world for two weeks at the Olympics. So, until that point, you know, this is actually, you know, a really good thing for our sport in general. And I just want to say, if anyone here is a Vanderbilt fan, sorry, just had to throw that out there. Anyway, without a doubt, Alex is one of my best athletes by far. We've come a long way. I've been coaching him for four years now, starting off in club and now with high school. He's come a long way. Alex, if you want to come on up. He, last year, he had a rough freshman year, and he is only a sophomore, and he was the only sophomore to score in the 100-fly and the 100-back. I think there was one other in the 100-back, but he was the only sophomore. And to put it together, what him and his teammates have done, they broke the school record in the 400-free relay, two freshmen and two sophomores. That right there shows the future of our program and our team, and he's the leader of that. So, thank you, Alex. (Applause).
It is my honor to introduce Jerry Moselli, our head wrestling coach, and he's going to talk about the fantastic season that one of our wrestlers have had. He took second place last year and was a state champion this year in wrestling at the heavyweight division, Jeremy Brazil. And we're just really, really excited about this. This is our second IHSA state champion individual, and so I'm going to ask Jerry to come up and introduce Jeremy and tell you a little bit about his season.
If you're writing checks, wrestling can always use a check. You guys in that mood? Real quick, I'll tell you a little bit about Jeremy. Last year, he came out, he was ranked top in the state, and rankings don't mean anything. And when we went down there, we knew we had something special, and we told him, have some fun, win matches. He made it to the finals, he lost 4-3 to a Montini kid, and I tell you right now, if we had two days to prepare for that kid, we had film on him, we'd beat him. And this year, he was ranked 11th in the nation in Wind Magazine as a heavyweight from Vernon Hills. And all season long, he was ranked number one, and we kept, you know, Jeremy, rankings don't mean anything, we just got to wrestle. And he walked through the conference meet, he walked through regionals, and he walked through sectionals. He got to state, and boom, boom, boom. He did what he had to do. I told, we told him, it didn't have to be fancy, just win, you're a state champ. Because I knew in the finals, that kid from Yorkville, I know Victoriz isn't here, he's from Yorkville, Jeremy would have launched this kid, and he said, you don't have to, you need to get disqualified, just win it. And Jeremy, his record for the year was 45-1. Last year, he was 40-7, and there was no doubt, in my mind, all year, that we had a state champ, but we had to keep our cards close to our hand and be very humble. Jeremy also hasn't decided where he's going yet. He's got some offers, so he's taking his time, and I can't tell you how proud I am.
Next, I'd like to have our boys bowling team come forward. Ron Long is the head coach, Steve Spigner is the assistant, uh, Bill Spigner is the assistant, and Steve Lindit is the second assistant. I think just Bill is with us tonight. So, Bill, bring the boys forward. We're just so proud of our boys bowling team. This is two years in a row that the boys have taken second in state. I'm going to let Mr. Spigner tell you a little bit more about their season, but they also won conference again and were second in the sectional. So, Bill, if you could just explain about their season a little bit, and we're just so proud of your two years in a row, second place finishing state. Congratulations.
Do I have to hold this in? No, it's all right. Thanks for having us here tonight. Welcome to everybody, and have a good evening. And it was a fun season, you know, at the beginning of every season, you never know what you're going to get. You know, it's like a box of chocolates, they always say that. So, it's kind of that way with bowling, and we had a team that really gelled together this year. We had, we started off the season not having five guys that were really solid with varsity, and we had four, actually, three that were really good, one that was really close, and a few that were fairly close. But as the season went on and the bowlers developed, we ended up with a solid five at the end of the season. Last year, we had like nine kids that were able to beat varsity starters. This year, we had five. And our sixth player came back at the end of the season, Parrish Ashford. He's beaten ball all year, but he was able to fill in at the end and became our sixth player at the state. And we had actually eight people that we put on the roster for sectionals and state, but we only took six to each one. And it's really a testament to the work ethic that these guys have. Some came in as freshmen, they had never bowled before, and by the time they were seniors, they went from 100 average as a freshman to 205 average as a senior. That's pretty impressive improvement by a team. And for me personally, I'm very proud to be part of this team. I've been with Ron since the beginning, we've been working together, we make a good team. I do things he can't do, he does things I can't do. So, it's been a really good relationship, and I'm proud to be part of this, and having you guys honor us tonight. So, I'd like to introduce our players. First Parrish Ashford, who's not here tonight. He was the first-year varsity starter this year, was a senior, and he was instrumental at the end of the season. When we put him in a couple of times, when we really needed help, he came through big time. The second guy that's not here tonight, David Goldberg. He started out, and as a freshman, we actually cut him. And then Ron and I talked afterwards, and he said, nah, we, let's just take everybody we can, we never know what's going to happen. And he had never bowled before, and he became one of our star players. He averaged 208 this year. And so, he was steady as a rock, he had some really big tournaments during the season, so he helped us out a lot. He's on his way to Marquette next year, so he's on to bigger and better things. The next fellow I'd like to introduce is Alex Winter. He was with us all four years, and this was his first year as a varsity starter. He was just toiling away all through those years and getting better and better, and this year, he got put into this fifth spot. He was actually fighting back and forth with another player, and then he came through a little bit better, and then we had the five guys, and he just became a rock in our lineup. What'd you end up averaging, 200-something this year? So, he doesn't know, so, not supposed to know all the facts. But anyways, he did a spectacular job, and he was there all the time. He was our third position player, and you could always count on him filling frames, and so many times, he finished games off with strikes, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, to finish games off. And that was one of our hallmarks, we finished games off all the time, even if we had a bad start, the team always came back at the end. So, that's Alex Winter. The next guy I'd like to introduce, he came to us as a freshman, like David Goldberg, not having bowled before, and rolled a 100, and he stayed all four years, and this year, he became a solid starter. Last year, he could have been a starter, we were so deep with talent, it was very hard to pick, and he got a lot of playing time this year, and he averaged over 200 in our conference. And as the year went on, he kept getting better and better, even with a wrist injury one time, and we got through that, and changed his game a little bit, and he became even better. And at sectionals, he finished 13th, which was a really good finish. And at state tournament, he led us, if without him, the first match, well, you bowl 12 games, in the first three games set, he shot 7.48 for three games. And it's highest set of his life, and he ended up finishing 13th individual at state, which was a pretty spectacular finish for a senior year. That's Sam Finney. The next fellow, I had his brother, and he came along, he was out to prove that he was better than his brother, he was going to try and bowl a game higher than his brother, and I don't know if he did that or not. No. In competition, his brother bowled with us, I kept calling him his brother's name all the time, you know, senior moment, you can't remember names, so. But anyways, Jeremy Steiniger, he was with us all four years. Last year, he was a starter in varsity. He's a southpaw, and it's really important to have a good left-hander, because lane conditions vary tremendously, and everywhere you go, they vary a lot, and they change a lot. So, if you have a solid left-hander, it helps a lot, and he filled that bill this year. And when we went to state, he had a rocky start, and we put him back in, he bowled spectacular, and the next morning, he got a little slow start, put it back in, and it was spectacular. He came back and bounced back tremendously, and he did that all season long. So, he was one of our most solid performers, second-team all-conference, and averaged 207 or 208. So, Jeremy Steiniger. I don't know about this next guy. He plays baseball, no, more, golf, bowls, I don't know what else. We, you know, it's all these kind of things. I've known him since he was a little kid, and I think his mom brought him to get lessons from me when he was about eight years old, so, I'm all right. I have video of him. It's embarrassing, but anyways, I've known him since he was a little guy, and he came to us as a freshman, and we had an assistant coach, Coach Lou Marks, and he was down there bowling with the newer people, and he came up to us and said, you got to get this guy up. He's bowling really good, good scores, and we were, you know, you don't watch everybody at one time, but it only took a couple of weeks, and then we moved him up, and we gave him a JV start, and he did really good as a JV bowler, and then we gave him a varsity start. And his first varsity start, I think he had a 680 series, he had bowled spectacular. So, that's sealed the deal with him as a varsity player for the rest of that year. And we made it to state that year, and in sectionals, as a freshman, he finished fourth. It's a pretty good deal. The next year, we made it to state again, and he continued to improve, we made him our leadoff guy, and it was a leadoff guy, it's a very important position, and he really shown as a leadoff guy, and then he finished third in the sectionals. And then last year, you finished third, you had an 816 series then too, right? And then Lake Zurich, in a 300 game that year too. And then this year, he was our leadoff man again, and, you know, he always the best bowler on a team, wants to be anchor, but we kind of held it off because he kind of had the fire in the leadoff position, he got the team going all the time, and he threw a lot of strikes, and didn't miss pairs, and he worked really hard, so he was a leader. And then near the end of the season, we put him in at anchor, and he bowled spectacular at anchor too. And we started that full-time at the sectionals, and in the sectionals, he finished second. So, Lake Zurich, our archrival, beat us in sectionals, we can't let that happen again, but that's okay. So, next year, we're expecting first. But anyways, whether it happens or not, he's been a real good player, he's a junior, he'll be a senior next year, and we're greatly looking forward to having him back. And I know he's good on the golf team, he's good in sports, and good in school, so, just like all our other athletes, they're really role models to follow for athletics and students. This Eric Swanson. (Applause).
With that, okay. So, moving on, tonight we have the wonderful opportunity to recognize a number of our Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School students. So, I will turn that over to...
We'll start with me. First, first of all, it's very exciting, and one of the most enjoyable things that we do is to recognize our students when they do good things, academically, in student activities, in the fine arts, in community service, and tonight's no different. And we are going to recognize a number of students tonight who have received a state recognition in a variety of activities. So, we're very excited to do that. Thank you for all coming, and before you all leave tonight, please stay because we want to give you a big round of applause for the work that you've done with your young people. So, without further ado, Al, I'm going to turn it over to you and Marina and Ellen.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming. I'd like to begin by introducing our boys head swim coach at Libertyville, Kevin Zetchevsky. And I can if you can come forward. Kevin's entering his fourth season as boys head swimming coach. He's a 2000 Stevenson grad, where he was an All-American swimmer and water polo player. He's also a three-time All-American swimmer at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and he qualified for the 2008 Olympic Trials in the 100-meter and 200-meter breaststroke. I say all that because I want you to know, in this district, how well-qualified our coaches are. But he's not only well-qualified with his swim expertise, also in the leadership development of our athletes. And he's here tonight, and just to show you a little bit about what happened this year, he had seven swimmers qualifying in eight events for the state meet, relay, and five individual events. So, that's quite an accomplishment in itself. We have a state medal winner that he'd like to introduce tonight, and I'm going to let him do that.
Thank you, Dr. Scott, and thank you, Board, for letting us come here and for the recognition. I wouldn't say this is just a recognition for me and my athlete, but also our sport. Only once every four years, our sport gets recognized in the world as the best sport in the world for two weeks at the Olympics. So, until that point, you know, this is actually, you know, a really good thing for our sport in general. And I just want to say, if anyone here is a Vanderbilt fan, sorry, just had to throw that out there. Anyway, without a doubt, Alex is one of my best athletes by far. We've come a long way. I've been coaching him for four years now, starting off in club and now with high school. He's come a long way. Alex, if you want to come on up. He, last year, he had a rough freshman year, and he is only a sophomore, and he was the only sophomore to score in the 100-fly and the 100-back. I think there was one other in the 100-back, but he was the only sophomore. And to put it together, what him and his teammates have done, they broke the school record in the 400-free relay, two freshmen and two sophomores. That right there shows the future of our program and our team, and he's the leader of that. So, thank you, Alex.
It is my honor to introduce Jerry Moselli, our head wrestling coach, and he's going to talk about the fantastic season that one of our wrestlers have had. He took second place last year and was a state champion this year in wrestling at the heavyweight division, Jeremy Brazil. And we're just really, really excited about this. This is our second IHSA state champion individual, and so I'm going to ask Jerry to come up and introduce Jeremy and tell you a little bit about his season.
If you're writing checks, wrestling can always use a check. You guys in that mood? Real quick, I'll tell you a little bit about Jeremy. Last year, he came out, he was ranked top in the state, and rankings don't mean anything, and when we went down there, we knew we had something special, and we told him, have some fun, win matches. He made it to the finals, he lost 4-3 to a Montini kid, and I tell you right now, if we had two days to prepare for that kid, we had film on him, we'd beat him. And this year, he was ranked 11th in the nation in Wind Magazine as a heavyweight from Vernon Hills. And all season long, he was ranked number one, and we kept, you know, Jeremy, rankings don't mean anything, we just got to wrestle. And he walked through the conference meet, he walked through regionals, and he walked through sectionals. He got to state, and boom, boom, boom. He did what he had to do. I told, we told him, it didn't have to be fancy, just win, you're a state champ. Because I knew in the finals, that kid from Yorkville, I know Victoriz isn't here, he's from Yorkville, Jeremy would have launched this kid, and he said, you don't have to, you need to get disqualified, just win it. And Jeremy, his record for the year was 45-1.
And then we gave him a varsity start. And his first varsity start, I think he had a 680 series. He had bowled spectacular. So that's sealed the deal with him as a varsity player for the rest of that year. And we made it to state that year. And in sectionals, as a freshman, he finished fourth. It was a pretty good deal. The next year, we made it to state again, and he continued to improve. We made him our leadoff guy, and it was a leadoff guy, it's a very important position. And he really shone as a leadoff guy, and then he finished third in the sectionals. And then last year, you finished third, you had an 816 series then too, right? And then Lake Zurich, and a 300 game that year too. And then this year, he was our leadoff man again, and you know, he always the best bowler on a team, wants to be anchor, but we kinda held it off because he kinda had the fire in the leadoff position. He got the team going all the time, and he threw a lot of strikes, and didn't miss pairs, and he worked really hard, so he was a leader. And then near the end of the season, we put him in at anchor, and he bowled spectacular at anchor too. And we started that full-time at the sectionals, and in the sectionals, he finished second. Lake Zurich, our archrival, beat us in sectionals. We can't let that happen again, but that's okay. So next year, we're expecting first. But anyways, whether it happens or not, he's been a real good player. He's a junior, he'll be a senior next year, and we're greatly looking forward to having him back. And I know he's good on the golf team, he's good in sports, and good in school, so just like all our other athletes, they're really role models to follow for athletics and students. This Eric Swanson.
Next, I'd like to introduce Frank Listina, who is gonna talk to you about our most All-State kids that we've ever had. He's gonna explain this a little bit, and this is really, we're just so proud of our music department and all the awards that they've won. And this is one of the biggest ever. And I'd like Frank to explain how this works, and we'll introduce the kids. Frank Listina is our head of our Fine Arts Department, and he has two other people over, David Tribley, our band director, assistant band director, along with Randy Sundell. And if you guys could come forward, that would be great.
Let's just, Ed, look, face different ways. Thank you, Dr. Swanson. Yes, I've been asked to just give a little bit of information, a little perspective of why these students are here. And first of all, maybe a little information. I'm sure you've probably heard the IMEA going around a little bit. Well, Illinois Music Educators is what IMEA stands for. And IMEA hosts district festivals, nine district festivals throughout the state of Illinois in the fall. And then all those students are really vying for that opportunity to be named All-State and go down to Peoria. And that happens in October, November, December, and then the festival for All-State is in January. This is not a group effort or a team effort, in a sense, these are all individual honors. So every one of these students that are standing here, plus I think eight that couldn't be with us tonight due to conflicts, all auditioned on wind or choral events, oh, sorry, wind, string, or choral events, and were selected on their individual instrument or voice to represent Vernon Hills High School in this first district and then state festival. And just a little perspective, I think, is important. The typical, well, there are nine districts in the state, and we are part of District Seven, which most will probably admit is the most competitive district, being in that northeast corner of Illinois. And in that most competitive district, there are about 80 to 90 high schools that participate in IMEA. It's pretty much every high school. There are just a few that decide not to do that. So of the 90 high schools that are, that participate in IMEA, typically, they're gonna get zero to five students selected for All-State. That's pretty much the typical way it goes at state. I've explained this to our parent organization and to the students. And then it turns out this year that there were 13 students, oh, and we were in that category a number of years ago, you know, when Vernon Hills started out, we would get our three or four All-State students, and we'd be just really thrilled. It just kept moving, so two years ago, we had 12, last year, we had 16. And this year, we set a new district record, actually, for the most at any school, of 17 students selected to All-State. More perspective, I think, might help. And that is that when it came to the, there were 13 schools in our District Seven that had more than five students selected to All-State. And of those 13 schools, our parents heard about this, and they made this poster, if you wanna take that out, some way for us to acknowledge this for the future, that Vernon Hills, the smallest school in District Seven, had the most students in our district. So the next closest school was Front High School with 14, and then there's Vernon Hills on top with 17 students. Now again, this is not really a group competition, and no one keeps records of this, but we had to find some way to celebrate that. And I think, Dave, do you still have the, we decided that we needed to take a picture of our 17 students at our holiday concert, along with this poster that the parents came up with, and we're going to hang that proudly in our hallway, to acknowledge not only the individual efforts of all these students, but of course, the staff efforts. And thank you for, to Dave Tribley, Randy Sundell, who could be here tonight, and other staff members who couldn't make it due to conflict, Jeremy Little, Fran Fata, Zach May, and I guess I'm in that group too, I do something with the orchestra once in a while. So I think I got everyone right. So thank you so much for your accomplishments and for bringing such honor to Vernon Hills High School.
And next, we're gonna introduce our cheerleading squad, who has, for the first time, put a banner up in our contest gym, and we are here to celebrate their fourth-place finish in state. Their coach, Shauna Rivera, head coach couldn't be here tonight, but the assistant coach is going to talk about the team, and it is Nisha Meckerdija. I think I got that right, or close. So if Nisha could come forward and just say some brief words about the girls, we're gonna fourth-place finish.
Well, this is the varsity cheerleading team that we're gonna recognize tonight. And this is actually the second year that the girls have qualified for state. Last year, the girls ranked eighth in state, and this year, on February 4th, the girls scored fourth in state, and we're very proud of them. Closest to me, to my left, is freshman Bree Amade. Next is junior Agnes Anzac. Following is junior Natalie Shirillo. Nicole Denali could not be here tonight. Following is freshman Alexa Fea. Sophomore Amanda Hirschman. Sophomore Haley Himmel. Sophomore Courtney Lawless. Jess Mahan could not be here today, but she's senior, Jess Mahan. Megan Maline could not be here as well. Senior and captain Ally Manati. Freshman Simone Newman. Senior and captain Taylor Pearson. Junior Laura Prunholm. Junior Tara Rooney. Junior Hunter Ruder. Captain and senior Kara Sage. Senior Allison Salazar. And freshman Jordan Schneider. We're very proud of the girls.
You guys get best formation.
Next, I'd like to introduce Paul Bretner and ask the girls' basketball team to come forward. This has been quite a ride, and we just really had such an enjoyable winter. And I'm gonna let Paul start with and explain their regional title on up and give a little bit recap of their season. Paul Bretner.
Thanks for having us. This year before the postseason was a very nice year for us. We broke all kinds of school records. The girls started out with a mission to do things that no other varsity girls' basketball team has ever done here at Vernon Hills. And a lot of missions were accomplished. We were undefeated in the prairie and broke school records for wins, but if that was all we did, we wouldn't be here tonight. We had a really nice postseason. The leadership from this team really shone through, and we started by winning a regional title, which we'd never done before. We lost several times in our efforts to do so, but finally got one, and they just didn't wanna stop there. They won a sectional semifinal to Carmel on a last-second putback by Julie Peck. We won a sectional final, went out to Elgin to be Belvedere in a super sectional, and then beat the number-one ranked team in the state in the semifinals before succumbing to Montini to take second place. So it was a really, really great run for postseason, the girls did a great job. Here tonight are Coach Blanton, who played for us here at Vernon Hills High School, she's a 2004 product. Haley Liebering. Kristen Guyomi. Casey Fernbach. Mia Pliski. Alyssa Burrows. Abby Springer. Ree Baumann. Alina Lahaki. Julie Peck. Lauren Webb. Sidney Smith. And Megan Reed. Unable to be here is Mary Bennett Swanson, as well as Catherine Kuzwar and Maddy Roberts. Thanks for having us.
Stay here, Paul Bretner, if you can stay here. As we have the Palms Assembly, we just wanna let people know that we just found out this week, but we have one other award. I don't know if the girls know this, but we just found out last Friday that Coach Bretner, with the Illinois Basketball, Girls Basketball Association, he was named the class Division 3A Co-Coach of the Year for the IHSA. So congratulations. And now at this time, if we can have our dance team come forward. Head coach is Beth Richards and Brittany Redding. And our assistant coach is Michelle Bastiani, and I don't know if Michelle's here tonight, right? So at this time, I would like to introduce Beth Richards and just let everyone know how proud we are of our dance team. This is five years in a row that our girls' dance team have won a state title. And for the last two years, they have won two state titles. And they are just one of our most decorated teams here at Vernon Hills High School. And every year, when we see them at basketball games and at competitions, we're just blown away by the expertise and how many hours of hard work these guys have put in. So congratulations on another great season, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Beth Richards to introduce you to the team.
Thank you. It was a truly amazing honor for the varsity Palms team to represent Vernon Hills High School at the Team Dance Illinois State Competition this past month. The team placed first in the 2A Open Palm category, second in the 2A Open Dance category, and received a new honor as they were named the 2A Dance Grand Champions for obtaining the highest composite score of all 28 teams competing in the 2A Division at state. With this honor, the team earned a $500 sponsorship for our Palms program for next year. This is a first for the VHS varsity Palms team. It is with honor that I introduce the 2011, 2012 varsity Palms team, starting with seniors Monique Beard, Kristen Cammon, Liz Slobek, team captain Elizabeth Chapman, team captain Marley Levin, and team captain Michelle Nussbaum. Juniors Delaney Lieber and Brianna Pearl, sophomores Kimberly Omari, Jaden Amade, Christine Chapman, Dana Dubinsky, Jessica Johnson, and Beth Wine Gardner, and freshmen Keely Fliss and Maddy Solar. Thank you for all your support this season.
Great job, girls. Great job.
Last, if I can have Nancy Shipley come forward. Nancy Shipley? The GMLA Chamber of Commerce presented its 2011 Annual Business Awards to nine chamber members at its recent winter gala. The awards recognized members for their accomplishments and efforts in business and community services. Vernon Hills High School Applied Tech Business Education Family Consumer Science and Library Supervisor Nancy Shipley, that's a lot in the title, who was recently elected to her second term on the GLMV Board of Directors, was recognized as the GLMV Volunteer of the Year at the gala. Nancy is an outstanding representative of our district to the chamber and the business community in general. She continues to foster partnerships between the business community and District 128. And we are proud that she has been recognized by the GLMV chamber for the generous contribution of her time and talent. Congratulations, Nancy.
Okay, one thing we do wanna say, a lot of folks have left already, but I wanna tell you, I wanna thank the parents and the extended families of these young people, because it takes a lot of support for young people performing at a level that you see tonight across all of the areas that we have in the district. So we're very appreciative of your support, and once again, it's a great reason that we're an outstanding school. So thank you for everything that you do for your students and our students as well. So thanks again for coming tonight.
All right, Mastery Manager presentation.
Just like to introduce a few people who are directly involved in what's called Mastery Manager. We've talked a lot about our professional learning teams, and those teams made up of our teachers in various departments and various groups. One of the key components of the work that unifies that work is what's called Mastery Manager. We believe strongly in our district that data should drive our decision-making, and Mastery Manager is one way to make sense of all this data. And here tonight to talk about how that's being used in the two schools are Jenny Loica and Ray Albin at Libertyville, and Paul Bretner and John Gilliam from Vernon Hills High School.
Good, thank you, good evening. And as you can tell by the crowd, I've done nothing special this year. But I do want to just introduce, well, we've already been introduced, so I'll jump right into this. I'll take my somewhat short introduction and make it even shorter based on another time that we've spent here tonight. What I would, what we'd like to do is show you tonight the marvels of Mastery Manager, which Dr. Fleming has introduced here a little bit. And before we do that, I wanna jump to the how we got here. Actually, we're gonna need a clicker. How we got here, I'm gonna provide just a brief history. So picture, if you will. Picture, if you will, the last 20 years in District 128. And I want you to consider the amazing staff that we have. You know that we have amazing teachers doing amazing things in the classrooms, getting amazing results, higher than we've ever gotten. You know that we have fantastic students, two of them right there, and then a host of others through the district, again, doing marvelous things, achieving at levels never seen before. And then we have parents, super supportive in both their resources and the enthusiasm with which they dive into all areas of school. But I think it's fair to say that if you were to ask any one of those groups at any one time, so tell us a little bit about where our kids struggle when it comes to school, to academics. Where do they fall a little bit short? What are those things that they really don't quite master to that level that we would all want and expect? They probably would tell you things like, "Well, didn't do very well on a chapter test." "Haven't quite finished all their homework." "Had a really tough biology chapter." Those kinds of things. Yet not be able to point to specific data to where it is, what specific goal or target it is that they struggled with. You'd ask teachers, and they'd say, "My kids are great, they struggle in this one chapter." You'd ask kids, and they'd say, "Yeah, I do well, except I had this one bad test." So that's kinda been the history of where we've been. And we've tried several things to get that specific data, but I think where we are now is at the cusp of something special. And there have been two things that have led to that point, and Dr. Fleming mentioned one of them. The first is our work, and you know them both, the first is our work with what we've done with standards in our curriculum. So we have, as a district, have stepped back and said, "Okay, what are the things that we want our classes to be all about? What are those core things that we want every student to be able to learn and know and understand? And underneath those standards, what are the targets that our teachers can point to to say, "All right, we've got these standards, and these are the things underneath those standards that we want our kids to know and understand?" The second thing that we've put a lot of time and effort into is our professional learning communities. Again, you're well aware of those. And it's been this year that we've brought our most valuable resource...
And what we saw was that the test generator programs were able to hold a lot of information, but they were limiting in the fact that you had to use those programs to actually create all of your tests to then be able to analyze it. And Mastery Manager is really just an answer sheet generator. So it allows our, all of our staff all over the building to create their own tests within the confines of their PLCs, and then just to apply basically a data analysis tool with Mastery Manager to analyze the data that they're getting. We have a little picture here. You can see it's web-based, it's totally, it's totally online. Our teachers can check into it and create their answer sheets anywhere that they want to. The other thing that this program has the ability to do, and John mentioned it a little bit, is for the first time, we can not only create any of our tests and then an answer sheet that then is simply sort of scanned, but we can also then begin doing some linking of each individual question to standards and all the way down to individual learning targets for every class. And what that allows then is an analysis of the, you know, of the type that we've never really been able to experience. What we found is that, you know, the Mastery Manager program is very easy to use, it's very user-friendly, within a very short timeframe, usually less than about an hour, we can have our teachers totally up to speed on how to access it, how to at least initially create those tests. And then over the course of this year, we've slowly put in our standards into the program to the point where they're now able to begin to link the answer sheets and the questions to those standards. So that is, in a nutshell, quite honestly, what it is. And now we'll move on to Paul here to tell us a little bit more. How it's used. The teachers will log on, as he said, and this is kind of the nuts and bolts, the biggest part of it is creating your answer key. This has a little variety, has a true, false, multiple choice. These things can take any form, really, matching, a short answer, a long answer, you can do essay, you can do some grading with essay. All the while, when you make this, you tie it back to standards, as Ray said, so you get better reports that Jen will talk about in just a second. A teacher can use this for an individual assessment that they create. The professional learning committees can create a common assessment, departments can have common finals, and they can all link together so that they kind of see and help one another. Part of the PLC benefits is that if I'm teaching with three other colleagues and I'm lacking in a certain area, a certain standard, I can then talk to my colleagues and get a little bit better at that area or find out what they do. The communication aspect of this is really nice. This is what the kids will see and receive when they're taking. This takes the place of the Scantron sheet from years and years and years. And as you can see, it's individualized for each student, their name is on their ID number, the upper-left code helps us send to the reporting part of this thing how they did and how they compare to others. Anything you put on a test can be done in here, which is really a real nice aspect of it. Students take it. And then we have several of these in each building, and these are scanners where the teachers go and scan, and from there, the scanner automatically sends it into your account and to your reports, which Jen will talk about now.
All right. So, oh my. Three main situations that you're going to come to find in typical school setting, you've got your parent meetings, you've got a teacher trying to meet with students, and you also have teachers meeting together, collaborating on assessments and lesson plans and things like that. So if we talk about parents first, here, typical parent meeting, where before, like John said, you may see, you know, the student didn't do too well on the Chapter 9 test. Well, what in the world does that mean? What's going on? How do they compare to the other students in the class, to the grade level as a whole? And if we dive in here, get ready for this. All right. What's cool about the, some of the charts that you can do with Mastery Manager is you can get a comparison right away of where that student fits in, in the classroom, and throughout everyone taking that course. Here, this Sally student is blue, and you can see them compared to the teacher average, which is green, which is a double-period Algebra I class, and then the red average, which is all of the students taking Algebra I. So right away, you get a glimpse into longitudinally how the student is doing, as well as how the student compares to the overall. So effective in a parent meeting because they can right away see exactly, oh, my student's up and down, they get it sometimes, they don't get it, this is where they fall within the class. Really neat. Students themselves working with the teacher, referring again to the, you know, I didn't do too well on Chapter 9, what does that mean? Oh, yeah. Mastery Manager, once it's connected to the learning targets, can give a printout of everything that the student has mastered and not mastered, which is really cool. So at the end of the semester, before final exams, I can hand these to each one of my kids and say, hey, the green ones, you got that. Don't worry about studying that, you're going to rack that on the final. The red ones, you need a little bit more help with. These are the targets where you need to go home, study, come in and get some extra help. So fast, as opposed to sorting through every test and figuring out what's going on. And teachers collaborating. Okay, we have a few things here. This is a basic item analysis, and I know it probably looks extremely small from where you're sitting, but pretty much, I'm sure you can see some green blobs back there, and those are the correct answer, and it shows the percentage of students who got that right. And then it also shows the yellow, which was the most common distractor. So as a teacher, I can look at this and say, number one, 80% of my students are getting this right, but 20% keep going towards A. What's going on in A? What error are they making, and how can I fix that? Once you make a common assessment, working with your PLC, you then get yours, which is just A, and overall A, which is everyone who took the assessment. So now I can see how my students are doing in comparison to every single student who took the assessment. Pretty neat, just a click of a button, creates some great conversation in the PLC meetings. One more step, when the assessments are aligned to standards, you get this item analysis that's broken up for every single standard. So now I get to see where my questions fall, under what target, and if my students have mastered that target or not. Really rich information, couple clicks. Another thing, and these are so great for people who aren't good at charts, I mean, this is just right here, red is overall for the teacher, and blue is overall for everyone who took the assessment. So I can see right off the bat, my kids are scoring better than the overall average. I'm doing something right in this chapter. Once I align it to standards and targets, I get this for every single learning target. I can see, okay, my students are above the average on this learning target, but below the average on the other one. Maybe I should check in with some of my colleagues and see what they're teaching, change some of my lesson plans up so that I can raise those. And that's what Mastery Manager can do. And those are the marvels of Mastery Manager. Thanks for having us, Jen.
Couple more thoughts. One, in terms of implementation, we are not 100% across the board. We have, we have a lot of power users in this, and teachers are coming onboard as they're feel, they're working that way, so on and so forth. I also want to just pat on the back both Jen and Paul, they are really the drivers behind this thing, as math teachers, but more importantly, they take on roles of our school improvement process in both buildings, so I want to thank them especially, they're awesome. So that's it. Any questions?
How well will this be received as people move into something new like this? I'm just wondering, will there be resistance by some teachers, or, hey, what I do is perfect, don't mess with me, can't grab somebody else? I'm just wondering, how you get through in this side of this?
So, and that's probably why not 100% of our teachers are working on it. But I would say this, there's a couple of things. One, there's a pretty good energy level with the teachers that are using it and using it right. So I think, you know, that kind of positive peer pressure, as teachers begin to see, wow, this really can show us some things that we've never been able to see before, can do some things that these other programs haven't done, that kind of builds positive momentum. And then it's just staff development, making sure they understand what it can provide and how it can provide, and slowly but surely, we can build that momentum really towards everybody, if possible.
You know what helps, Alex? You kind of see your data disaveraged and then the whole, everybody else can't see your specific data, so that makes you a little less vulnerable.
So it's just a year, a couple of years of integration then and adaptation, is that really what you see?
Right. That's what we're hoping.
So the assessments are written by the PLCs?
Right. Yeah, to some extent. Right now, individual teachers are experimenting with their own personal assessments, and the PLCs, we've seen that, we saw the biggest buy-in of the PLCs during final exam time during their summative assessments. Those, almost across the board in both buildings, were done via Mastery Manager because of the analysis. A lot of the standards weren't put in yet, they're just starting to be integrated, but the simple analysis and sort of distractor choices are being analyzed by Mastery Manager right now, and then the groups are actually asking for, well, what does it do once we put in the standards? And Jen and Paul have started showing them all the further reports that they can generate.
Thanks, everybody. All right, thank you. That's great. Okay. Awesome. Okay. In the president's report, I'll just take this opportunity really to review for the public, one item in particular. Over the last several years, we've implemented a number of long-term financial projection tools, and we've spent a lot of time over the last couple of months evaluating our current near and long-term financial requirements. We're fortunate in this district that even given the current state of the economy, our district is very strong financially. And over the last few months, we've had extensive discussions concerning our current financial position, the current reserves, and our long-term needs. And we've done this from really a balance of two perspectives. One is, we recognize the importance of our taxpayers and the need wherever possible to give them relief, while at the same time, taking on the responsibility to make sure that we continue to provide the quality education programs that are really the hallmark of this district. And we're also, I think, simultaneously balancing a very uncertain time within the state and face a number of unfunded mandates or other actions that may be taken by the state legislature that could have a significant impact on our district finances. Nevertheless, on Monday, last Monday, a week ago, we took the action to abate back to the taxpayers $2 million in order to essentially freeze the taxes at last year's level, approximately. So I would want everyone in the district to understand that we took this action after very deliberate and extensive discussions. We think it's in the best interest of all of our constituents, being our taxpayers, our students, and everybody involved in the school district. And I think we did it in a thoughtful way that also preserves our long-term abilities to continue to raise the funds that we need for the district. So we will issue a press release on that, I believe, later tonight, if that's correct. And there'll be more information there. Okay? So to everyone on the board, I would like to say thanks for very, very good discussions. I think we very thoroughly vetted out the issues from all sides. For those of you who were not at the meeting, I believe the vote was five to two. And at least from my perspective, I was very proud of that vote, from the perspective that I think we really did do a good job of very thoroughly discussing the pros and cons of the actions that we took. And although I understand the vote was not unanimous, I think as a board, we're very united behind the actions that we took. And, you know, I'm glad that we did that. Okay?
Just one further note on that, the cash abatement will come from the bond and interest fund and not from the education fund.
Right. Okay. Moving along, reports from our two school board representatives, who would like to go first? Jerika?
I'll go first. Hi. All right. First, I'd like to start off by saying that I am so proud of our school and our district. As I was sitting here watching everyone be recognized, I was listening to Mr. Micali talk about Jeremy, and usually I'm a little bitter towards him because he's my early bird weight training teacher, and he makes me come to school at 6:55 every morning, but, you know, he does everything from that to coaching Jeremy to be the state champion. And Jeremy used to be just, you know, the guy in middle school, and now he's the state champion in wrestling, and all these other people who are getting recognized, and I think that's so wonderful. Just to give you a sense of the atmosphere at Vernon Hills right now, the weather has changed, and so all the, all the windows are open in the classrooms, and so people are getting a little squirrely. And today, in the courtyard, someone was singing the Lion King song, and every single classroom was able to hear him singing. So it's a different atmosphere right now, but I think it's really fun. And a couple weeks ago, we had International Languages Week, where for one day, for all the international languages, international language classes went to the Studio Theater to hear presentations about Kova Lions in Uganda, given by myself and Mr. Katon, and also they were able to share foods from different cultures that they made themselves. So that was a great way for them to experience different cultures, rather than just learning about their languages in the classroom. Basketball and Poms, that was really great. I'm usually, I'm more into fine arts, so I'm not that, like, into sports, but that day when the basketball team was playing in the second, in like the second to last round, I don't know what it's called, but that was, that, the atmosphere at the school was so exciting, and everyone was watching the game during their lunch periods, and everyone was running in the passing periods to get to the next period to watch the game. So it was just a lot of fun. On March 3rd, we had Solon Ensemble for our Fine Arts Department, and this year, we actually went away from the IHSA as a music department because we wanted it to be more of a learning experience, rather than we go perform for the judges and get a score. And oftentimes, we would just get a numerical score, and that's how we would judge ourselves. And although we would be eligible to compete for like a state title, we felt that doing a joint program with Libertyville for Solon Ensemble, there was more of a learning experience, and we were able to work on our songs with the judges more. I think this is really exciting. Jamie Lono, who was a Vernon Hills graduate a couple of years ago, was invited to sing on The Voice, and he came for a visit to Vernon Hills High School a couple of days ago, which was really exciting, and all the freshman girls got excited for that. And last weekend, we had Best Buddies Poms, where all the special ed children were able to enjoy the experience of Poms. And so that was the last month of Vernon Hills High School.
Thank you very much, Jen.
So Christian and I would just like to start off by commenting on the Mastery Manager presentation, because we, in our AP Macro class, Mr. Boss uses it. So do you want to?
Sure. Actually, it's kind of funny that they say this is a rarity, because I, more than half my classes use this program now, so it's kind of funny for them to be like, trying to promote it. But Mr. Bush uses it in physics, AP Physics C, Mr. Boss is using it in AP Macro, and we got it in August, and we asked him about it, because, you know, it's different. We're like, oh, what's this? And he's like, oh, it just gives me way better results, and I can look at you guys versus Mr. Mark's class, who's the other physics teacher, and they look at everything to see like what they can be doing better. So I was like, okay, then, what's the same to me, I'll just take the test. So if it gives them better results, and that's what they think, then I think it's a good program. And Mr. Boss, what we do is we go back and look at our tests, and he projects what you saw there on the screen of our actual results. So we go through, and he looks at those, what they told him, the distractors and all that, the other answers, and we look at them, and he goes, all right, I put this on here for a reason, this is why you guys are choosing this, but this is the actual concept we should have been learning. So it's giving us better feedback, even as students, that we've already noticed in the first couple of months. So that's just a good thing.
And it's kind of cool to see, you know, our statistics among the, our own class, you can kind of see, you know, was I, you know, in the top 50% or in the bottom 50%, and how can, you know, I personally improve, or improve? And that'll, that helps, you know, one-on-one with the teacher, like they had mentioned. But it also kind of gives you a broader spec-
And last weekend, we had Best Buddies Prom where all the special ed children were able to enjoy the experience of prom. And so that was the last month of Vernon Hills High School.
So Christian and I would just like to start off by commenting on the Mastery Manager presentation because we, in our AP Macro class, Mr. Boss uses it. So do you want to?
Sure. Actually, it's kind of funny that they say this is a rarity because I, more than half my classes use this program now. So it's kind of funny for them to be like trying to promote it. But Mr. Bush uses it in physics, AP Physics C. Mr. Boss is using it in AP Macro. And we got it in August. We asked him about it because, you know, it's different. We're like, oh, what's this? And he's like, oh, it just gives me way better results. And I can look at you guys versus Mr. Mark's class, who's the other physics teacher. And they look at everything to see like what they can be doing better. So I was like, okay, then what's the same to me? I'll just take the test. So if it gives them better results, and that's what they think, then I think it's a good program. And Mr. Boss, what we do is we go back and look at our tests and he projects what you saw there on the screen of our actual results. So we go through and he looks at those, what they told him, the distractors and all that, the other answers. And we look at them and he goes, all right, I put this on here for a reason. This is why you guys are choosing this. But this is the actual concept we should have been learning. So it's giving us better feedback even as students that we've already noticed in the first couple of months. So that's just a good thing.
And it's kind of cool to see, you know, our statistics among the our our own class. You can kind of see, you know, was I, you know, in the top 50% or the bottom 50%? And how can, you know, I personally approve or improve? And that'll that helps, you know, one on one with the teacher like they had mentioned. But it also kind of gives you a broader spectrum of how am I doing of the rest of the kids that are taking this AP test? And, you know, how am I going to do against that? So it's really neat. I I like it as soon as seeing the results up there, you know, in charts and graphs. So it's really cool.
And then in other news, this Wednesday orchestra concert with the choir, they're actually performing some pieces with both of them. It's like a joint concert, so that should be pretty interesting. And then the Monday after we get back from spring break, the choir and orchestra were going down to perform at the Symphony Center. The CSO plays down in Chicago and we're performing the same program. So that should be a great experience as well. And this spring break, the band is going on a cruise down in the Caribbean. So they've got a good life.
Yeah. So then also when we come back from spring break, we have Writers Week. That's headed up by, I think there's five English teachers that start this. And last year, I remember going and, I mean, it was it was great. There's student pieces, teachers' performances. I know one of my teachers is bringing his band and his band is playing for us, which is kind of cool. And also they bring in authors and talk about how authors have gone through the writing process and, you know, there's different genres. So it's really interesting, especially for those students who want to pursue, you know, journalism or some kind of English or writing in the future. Also Debate this past weekend had a successful weekend, including sending one of their members to the state competition, which I believe is coming up shortly. Special Olympics received third place for their basketball state tournament. And I have gym class with the special ed kids and they were all wearing their medals and they were so proud of what they had done. Even though they really wanted to get first, we were all really, really proud of them just to see them, you know, have, you know, say that I have a special announcement. And the biggest thing for them, I think, was taking the coach bus down there. They were really, really excited about that. So and also like Kate had mentioned, the Best Buddies Prom. They all had just a wonderful time and seeing their friends from other schools that that were there because it was all Lake County. So that was really neat. And at Libertyville, we also had our Language Week. And we went to the Studio Theatre and we didn't have the Uganda presentation, but I'm sure that was absolutely amazing. We had a song and dance group come in and share different different dances and songs from different regions. So that was really neat to experience it that way. And lastly, the Future Business Leaders of America have their state competition coming up the second weekend in spring break. So that weekend before we go back. So we want to wish them luck.
It's very, I think it's very exciting to hear you guys' response to the previous presentation. You know, I think you and we are very fortunate. Not only do we have resources to do those kinds of things, but I think the fact that we have teachers that really want that kind of feedback and and use that feedback to really better themselves in the classroom, I think says a lot for the kind of teachers that we have. And I'm especially impressed by the way you can actually look at when you do something wrong, which you can learn from it. So I think that's just one great example of how we're trying to use technology to really and truly enhance the the learning and the curriculum that we provide. And I think it's great to see the kind of feedback that you guys had tonight. And last but not least, after spring break, history would say the last two months will fly by very quickly. I noticed the graduation announcement on my dinner table this evening, or at least all the things to do to get ready for graduation. I just went, whoa, this year's really flying by. Superintendent's report.
Okay, it's hard to believe, but we have some more good news. As much good news as we've had tonight, there is more. The following Libertyville High School students were named February Students of the Month. Kevin Zirkowski, Nick Johnson, Molly Downey, Brandy Favors, Sarah Crumb, Matty Griffith, Rosie Lynch, Victoria Atkinay, Megan Gallup, Cole Blazer, Jason Volker, Allison Martin, Chase Wonderlick, Haley Skeens and Hannah Anderson. The following Vernon Hills High School students were named Cougar Class Act Award winners for March. Jacqueline Burnus, Ashley Ballou, Kelly Kalish, Jackie Martinez, Tim Clausen, M.J. Crowley, Steve Capazoli, Rishi Ling and Abraham Alliday. The LHS Model UN team competed at last month's Model UN Conference at Duke University. Ann Kern-Rostogi, Aruj Ahmad, Osman Jamil and Sean Baird earned verbal commendations. Paula Jean and Elizabeth Fenewall won Outstanding Delegates for their representation of the Netherlands in the European Union. Jojo Amador won Outstanding Delegate for representing Wang Laquan in the Chinese Politburo. Joey Nedlin won Best Delegate for representing Frank Maladese in the Inkata Freedom Party. Congratulations to the VHHS DECA business members who participated in the DECA State Career Development Conference in Decatur. DECA members Aaron Bolanowski, Navia Chaco, Gabriel Cotton, Lauren Brudy, Marjorie Karolinko and Ridhish Mishra all earned top places at state, qualifying them for the International Career Development Conference in Salt Lake City at the end of April. VHHS DECA advisors are Beth Richards and Alicia Abud. Might be taking a trip to Salt Lake later. On Saturday, March 3rd, the LHS Varsity and JV Science Olympiad Teams competed in the Regional Science Olympiad Competition in Oswego. Varsity team members medaled in 21 of 23 events and placed third overall, earning the team a bid to the state tournament at the University of Illinois in Urbana-Champaign on April 14. The teams are coached by Ursula Aern and Mary Allen. Varsity members are Wes Allen, Max Allen, Adam Blythe, Charlie Burnett, Marcellie Joseph, Jason Lee, Kelly Louvers, Joey Nedlin, Erin Neal, Colleen Policki, Connor Robinson, Patrick Slade, Tommy Wagener and Colin Foo. Junior varsity members are Brent Chow, Rose Anna Chin, Maya D'Sousa, Megan Harder, Jane Lee, Heather Legan, Jordan Newman, Gordon Schlicht, Nicole Whitern, Jessica Yen and Michael Plies. So congratulations to all of our students for another outstanding month at LHS and VHHS. The board will note in your packet and then I'll come back to the swimming pool compliance. We have nine, we have nine FOIA requests this month and they're noted. Okay, I wanted to give you an update on our two swimming pools that I know you have been waiting for. Before I do that, I want to pass around the press release that we will be handing out later. And the good news is, I'm happy to announce that the Illinois Department of Public Health has formally approved the district's Vernon Hills High School Swimming Pool Compliance Plan. In addition, IDPH has tentatively notified D-128 that preliminary, that the preliminary Libertyville High School Swimming Pool Compliance Plan should meet the requirements for issue of the required construction permit. To move the VHHS compliance plan forward as required, the VHHS bid specifications will be posted in the local newspaper no later than Wednesday, March 21st for 10 calendar days, which will end on Friday, March 30th. Bids will be open the following Monday on April 2nd. The Board of Education will hold a special board meeting on Thursday, April 4th in the morning, if you're available. I will poll you in a minute, to award the VHHS construction contract. Once the contract is awarded, construction is expected to begin as soon as possible thereafter. It should take 10 days or less to complete. Inspection and approval of the construction work and final occupancy permitting will follow completion of the construction. Regarding the LHS compliance plan, all required formal documents will be sent to IDPH this week for final review and hopefully will receive formal approval shortly thereafter. As with the VHHS compliance plan, once the district receives formal approval of the LHS compliance plan, the bid process, awarding of the contract, construction work inspection and occupancy permitting will follow shortly thereafter. D-128 Finance Assistant Jeff Sporis, Director of Buildings and Grounds Joe Thomaselli, LHS Athletic Director Brian Kelly, VHHS Athletic Director Brian McDonald and LHS Assistant Athletic Director John Fishel will work with the D-128 swim staff and community to facilitate and coordinate pool use during the construction process. I want to note special appreciation and thanks to the Illinois Department of Public Health and Head Engineer Justin DeWitt and Lead Pool Engineer Craig Steinheimer for their continued assistance in working with us toward swimming pool compliance. The IDPH team has gone above and beyond in reviewing compliance submissions, in communicating and providing timely and essential feedback for revisions and in demonstrating an excellent partnership in working with us toward compliance. We are very grateful for their efforts on our behalf. So we're very excited to announce that news tonight and we will move along quickly. What I need to know from the board is, would any of you be available the morning of Thursday, April 4th? We can meet.
Wednesday, April 4th?
Thursday, April 5th. Take a look at your calendar. Yasmin, it's a Thursday. So Thursday we want to go, right? So it'd be Thursday, April 5th. And we can meet as early as 7 o'clock in the morning. I would need, need at least four of you there. So we can get a bid recommendation from Justin Yasmin and we can vote on that and award the bid and move forward with the construction. Okay, we've got one, two, three, four, five. Okay, I'll leave probably.
How old are you? Almost at 7:00.
You guys pick the time, whatever works for you. Do you have 7:00?
I'll wake up earlier.
Okay, so we'll do 7 o'clock in the morning. We'll have a special meeting, correct Denise?
Yes.
A special meeting that will be at the district office. And the purpose of that meeting will be to award the bid contract for the Vernon Hills Swimming Pool Compliance Plan. Okay? All right. So we're good? All right, great. Thank you. Pat, I think that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Consent vote agenda is listed and was reviewed in committee. If I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please. Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Thank you. Jump ahead there. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak? Good. Thank you, Gary.
Good evening.
Hi.
Chairman, board members and superintendent. My name is Ken Chapin. I am the president of the Casey Landscaping Company in Monvaline. I am, live in the district. I've worked off and on for District 128 for over 40 years. I've lived in the district 44 years. And I'm here tonight. I want to pass on a little paper. If the people here, board members, are familiar with, I don't know if you all are board members, with the prevailing wage items that are are happening now. And it's something that is very upsetting in our industry, upsetting for. And I now, if you look at the first page, prevailing wage, which I understand. Prevailing wage right now is under the Laborers Act, which I've underlined. And right now, it's $56.65. And I understand you're in the position where you possibly will be awarding that amount of money to cut grass. I've been doing this in the business for 44 years. And we have never paid prevailing wage for lawn maintenance. Two or three years ago, when this came up at the school that I bid on, a former congressman, Melissa Bean, had her office almost next door to where the district office is. And she went down to the state labor union and to the the gap, the head lawyer.
Attorney general.
Attorney general. And they determined from her to me that we do not have to pay prevailing wage for lawn maintenance, trimming of shrubs, flower planting and so forth. You have a bid, I don't know if you have all the paperwork for the bids that have been received. I was the lowest bid on non-pervailing wage. And a prevailing wage came in at a bid of $42,154. And if you look at the third page, now I have mowed this, the turf at both of these places, taking care of the grounds. And I can guarantee you that it takes 1,680 hours for 28 visits to take care of both properties. And at $1,628, the last sheet shows you the math, that's $95,172. The second sheet is a certified payroll, which has to be made out by the contractor, sent to the state and also sent to the school every pay period. Now, sometimes that's weekly, sometimes that's every other week. It's something that I think the board should really consider. I think it needs to be looked at very seriously and not to pay this. This is, this is starting a terrible thing. It's started by the unions in Springfield to to force us to pay this wage. If we're digging, putting up a new building, fixing a swimming pool, that has to be prevailing wage. But to pay, the school district to pay that kind of money is is very, very expensive. It's about $50,000 higher than my bid. But the $42,000 bid is not a legitimate bid by the figure that I have. And I've done this for 40 years and I've done it about eight years for the school. So I know what it takes to do it. I just want to bring, make you aware of that. I will not bid it at prevailing wage because I don't believe in it. And if a guy is mowing at your school, hits the curb and damages a tractor and sits there an hour and a half, that guy makes 80, 90 dollars for sitting there an hour and a half not doing anything. You cannot figure that in your bid price and be fair to the school and be fair to the to the contractor. And if you look at the last page, that is without any profit, that's without workman's comp, that was without insurance, that's a bare costs. And so if you accept a bid for $42,000 when it's really about a $95,000 job, very, very risky on everybody's part. And I want to make that aware of that and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now consent for agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent for agenda, please?
I would to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Attention. Local, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Nellie Colley?
Aye.
Brudy?
Aye.
Lamstead?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye.
Retsch?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Updates from the Program and Personnel Committee, Chipper's in honor.
Okay, the first item we have are 2012/13 staffing recommendations.
As we noted at the P and P Committee meeting last week, we take our responsibilities in the area of staffing the district very seriously because it's a, it's a significant part of our budget. And so our staffing team, which includes Ellen and Marina, John Gilly and Ray Alvin, Al, myself, Yasmin and several other folks who come in and work with us on the staffing process, spend four half-days together going through sectioning numbers. And sectioning numbers are class course requests that students have at both of the high schools, including our incoming freshman class. And we use our optimum class sizes as advisors. And Ellen and Marina do a lot of work at the building level with their department supervisors before they come over for our large meetings. And then we spend our fourth days together going department by department and looking at each course offering, the number of sections that we need in terms of meeting the student needs for the next school year. A couple of things that I do want to point out, our overall involvement in the district is down by about 30 students. We're up by about 60 at Libertyville, 30, I guess. We're up by about 30 at Libertyville. We're down at Vernon Hills. And so the net out is about 30 students down. I'm happy to report tonight that if you look at the green summary sheet that I provided you, it's got the green line on the bottom there. you, it's got the green line on the bottom there, there is our overall impact on salaries for next year, which is the actual cost of the staffing. And we are going to be down conservatively about $423,000 in staffing costs next year. And that is using an average teacher salary of $80,000. The cost to replace staff this year was only $61,000, so that number is actually higher. The number that we reported last year was $567,000. And again, the cost to rehire the staff to bring in to fill the slots for the retired teachers in our needs was based on $80,000. So this number is actually a conservative number. If you translate this to FTE, or full-time equivalency, and you use $80,000, it's about 5.3 FTE. So cost-wise, we're going to be down about 5.3 FTE next year. So the good news in the last two years is we've saved almost a million dollars in staffing costs. That's taking advantage and leveraging a large number of retirees. We had the previous two years and the retirees that we're going to have this year. That will adequately staff our district for next year. And the courses our students have selected will again allow us to retain a high-quality teaching staff in the district. And I again want the public to know that we exercise great due diligence when we go through this process, but the savings are significant year over year over the past two years. As always, I would ask the board for one additional FTE to have Yasmin budget $80,000 in the budget for contingencies, and that would be for move-ins in the summer, for movements up and down during the school year. For example, if a student needed to move down from an advanced placement class to a regular level class, or vice versa, and we did not have room to move that student, we would have the ability to add a section and take some of that pressure off. So that's where the staffing is at this point. All we're asking you to do tonight is accept the staffing recommendation for the coming school year, and then we will be good to go. Or already, any positions that we have available for next year and needs to hire, we've been working on that for several months now. And as you see, we bring those hirees recommendations to you on a monthly basis. So again, I think the staffing team did a great job, and the overall bottom line is significantly less over the last two years.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept staffing recommendations as presented.
I move to accept the staffing recommendations as presented.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Okay, next we have board policies. These are not up for a vote tonight, this is just a first reading. So first, we have policy 2120, Board Member Development, and this just articulates the new requirements for board member training. We have policy 2190, Mailing Lists for Receiving Board Material. This policy has been repealed, so we're asking for a deletion of this. And we have 2200, Types of School Board Meetings. This requires school board members to take a course on the Open Meetings Act, and adds an additional reason for going into closed session. Then under the Operational Services Section, we have 4170, Safety. This adds language on reporting sex offenders, the Movable Soccer Goal Safety Act, and conducting a law enforcement drill. And I would just like to report that we are already doing this, our policy is just catching up with our practice here. Then under the Section of Personnel, we have 510, Equal Employment Opportunity and Minority Recruitment. This adds a protected classifications for EEO. We have 530, Hiring Process and Criteria. This clarifies language on hiring and investigating requirements of potential employees. Again, we are already doing this, but our policy is catching up with our practice here. Then Policy 5220, Substitute Teachers. This outlines changes for substitute teacher certification, number of days they can work in emergency situations. This also limits the days worked for TRS retirees from 120 to 100 per year. Under the Section of Instruction, we have 650, School Wellness. This policy's been updated to reflect changes due to the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, including nutrition promotion, monitoring, and community input. Then under the Students Section, we have two policies. The first, 7100, Health Eye and Dental Examinations, Immunizations, and Exclusion of Students. This clarifies language for the exclusion of students without proof of immunization. And finally, we have Student Discipline, 7190. That adds online threats to the list of prohibited student conduct, and it adds language to allow students expelled or suspended for more than 20 days to replace an alternative program immediately, without delay. So that's what we have for the first reading. Any questions? No? Okay, seeing none. Move on to C, Educational Tour Requests. Looking for a motion to approve those field trips.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Okay, and F is Other. I don't have any others. Does anyone else?
Do we get the vote on item B?
Huh? D?
B. No, no, we didn't, but there's nothing wrong with us doing that, but we're not required to vote on first reading.
First reading is usually just presented, and then the second reading we vote. And Ranser, that's important.
All right, Facilities and Finance Committee, Chairperson.
We have three bids to approve this evening. The first one is a, we need a motion that the Board of Education accept the bid from Workmasters, Inc., Displanes Illinois, for the replacement of the LHS kiln in the amount of $78,300. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the third motion we will need is that the Board of Education accept a bid from Millu Design LLC of Wheeling, Illinois, for the district's landscape management and fertilization program in the amount of $31,600 for the landscaping and $6,800 for the fertilization.
Pat, before we make a motion, Rick, you've done a little work on this for us. Can you kind of fill us in, or the board in, on the prevailing wage as it relates to landscape?
Sure. What Ken handed out is only part of it. Under the Laborers, there's a note, it's not included here, and either Jess or Yasmin asked me to look into this, where the Illinois Department of Labor is taking the position that landscapers should be under the Prevailing Wage Act. And I don't disagree with what Mr. Chapin said, that that took some people by surprise, but that's their position. And so my advice was, you know, it's not worth certainly a lawsuit, in my opinion. And if that's the position the Department of Labor is taking, that is a prevailing wage requirement, then I think you should adhere to it. So that's something new and something that wasn't quite delineated as specifically as it has been recently.
And the comment about not being able to be done for that kind of bid money, I can't call a company that didn't tell me the truth. So we asked them to send me a letter stating, and here it is from the general manager of Millu, it says, "Please be advising Millu Design proposal for the landscape service of alternate turf applications in the schools based on the comprehensive rates compliant with the prevailing wage." Signed by the general manager, in other words, he is meeting these specifications. Before he can be paid, he has to turn in a certifying payroll that has to say that he paid prevailing wage. He doesn't, then we have to rebid.
We're good. Thank you. Did we do the motion or no? Then I need a motion, please.
Based upon the advice of our attorney, I make a motion to accept the Millu, Millu Design bid opposed to it.
Second? Discussion? So, I mean, this looks too good to be, somebody's not right here. I just don't know which group's not, because, go ahead. I mean, you help clarify, I'm just looking at his numbers. I mean, if his numbers are anything close to correct-
The number of functions in this area.
That's how he explained those numbers.
The number of landscaping contracts around here. So his equipment is already deployed, so basically what he has to do is just provide the labor. And he's very comfortable that there's economy of scale.
But he's, this is, so just to understand it though, so the person that just presented, he's simply giving the number of man-hours it takes to do the job, which is almost 1,700 man-hours. So his simple calculation is 1,700 man-hours times prevailing wage, and he comes up with almost $100,000. And this guy's bid is for a third of that, so something's not right here. I don't know what it is. It's either the hours are wrong, or the guy's bid is wrong, but you can't bid on 1,700 hours for $33,000.
We agree, and we have some doubts, but we had a pre-bid meeting in which his company was here. He was bus to both locations, all of them, that they were here. And he, in his letter, says that he can do it for that amount of money.
How do we measure what they actually do and the time they spend? And I mean, how do we know?
Yeah, we have job tickets that are presented to Mr. Tom Sully after each time they come in. So we do monitor that time. And obviously, the most specific part of this bid is when they do the baseball field at the chess house in Vernon Hills and so forth, so that's time consumed. But the others, I'm sure they're going to come in and gain roots and come in here and just lots of staff since there are in the area. And again, I tell you, if you can't produce, you can't do it, then we go out. And at which time, I recommend to Yasmin, we give our own seasonal help and endure ourselves.
And what, so from tickets we've seen in the past, do we verify roughly what's happening on that as well?
Yeah, it is pretty close.
Seventeen hundred hours, the only way you can do it for less than that is you must have the mowers that are about three times as wide as the other ones.
Or lots of.
Well, with lots of still maybe.
It's not really our job to determine how this person is bidding this, is going to get the job.
Let me look to Rick and say, Rick, well, it just doesn't look right. I understand what we're saying here, which is that if everybody's telling the truth, and first of all, it's not possible, but if you have a bid that's telling the truth, then I have no problem with accepting the bid. But when it doesn't seem to jive with these other numbers, what seemed consistent with what we've done in the past, I also don't want to see us be vulnerable, because anybody called the brain could have looked at it and said, "Something's not right here." So do we have any-
Well, if you've given him the specifications, and he says that he can do it in either fewer hours, you know, or he has the equipment, then I don't know what went into looking at there are other qualifications, but if he's considered responsible, then I think you got to give him the bid.
There are three companies that are pretty close to that amount of money.
That's pretty much the 30s.
Yeah, and pretty good companies, big companies. You have that, you have, the next bid is at 33.5, and the one after that is at 35.5. And the 35.5, why don't you see their trucks all over the building?
But do we have, have they attested that they would need the prevailing wage? I don't really-
That's part of the bid.
That was the bid specs, the prevailing wage.
They have to sign a document.
I know they ought to sign documents, but you know, I know all about signing documents.
But they provide receipts to the end documentation that they are paying prevailing wages. Not only that, they have to document if we ask them to buy a pace pass and stuff, too, that they can-
They have to certify payroll.
But I think, yeah, the bottom line is, they're not going to spend, they're going to spend one-third the amount of time that this gentleman tells you is required. So if they do the job in one-third the time-
And at the same time, not making money.
Yeah. As long as they're certified and filled there, and you've said, and we know it's going to take $600 instead of $1,800, then this is a fine bid, but do we really know that?
No. No, I guess, I mean, again, all we know right now is that they're claiming that they will be there.
Except if at any time we are unhappy with the bid, we can make action to release them.
Oh, that's fine. But the idea that they're going to have more people speaking, that's counterintuitive to what they're really telling, they're going to spend one-third the time doing it. If they get the job done for one-third the time, then we're okay.
Well, you have three contractors telling you the same thing. I feel a little better that you've got three other contractors that did independently by themselves that came up with relative, you know, a cost number.
If there was only four of them, there was a big gap.
Right. I mean, as long as we know that they actually do mow the fields and stuff, and we still only paid $33,000, that's cool. But if, well, somebody ever feels they mow every other week, and we know it's because they don't have the resource to do it, then we have to figure out what to do.
Well, you're jack of the band, you know.
We'll hire our own people to supply the summer, summer, help, help.
Can I ask you a quick question? The certificate, a certified transcript of payroll, do we get a copy?
We have to get, before we issue, check, when they provide their invoice, we get a certified copy of that payroll on all of our projects that we do. We've had some that we've set out forever because we don't get the certified payroll. We cannot pay them yet.
Man, that's just basically whatever they say it wants to be. It doesn't have to be a certain prevailing wage or a certain amount of money, it's just, you know.
All they're saying is Sam Spade got paid prevailing wage for three hours. That protects the school board from meeting the obligation of the law.
And then, Rick, if the contractor doesn't, is found not to prevail, to have paid prevailing wage, then they have trouble with the Department of Labor, right?
That's right. But I do think you could, at that point, if they're not following the bid specs, you could void the contract, and then, of course, you'd have to figure out what you're going to do, but you could bid it out again.
But in the meantime, you have not paid them either for the services.
We can't pay for the certified.
It sounds like the worst thing that could happen is we could get to that point, and they realize, huh, you know, we really can't do it for this many hours? And then they'll have to either, you know, step out of the contract, or we'll have to negotiate something with them. I don't see any real risk.
Well, again, you've got three contractors who do all this stuff, who are involved in pricing, so.
It's not going to take long to figure out if we can do it. I mean, our building, the drop to Park is going to be streaming right off the bat, so we'll know.
The business we gotta worry about is whether or not all of them are under this delusion that they don't have to pay, that they never have, and they've had all these other contracts before, and, you know, I don't know whether they've signed agreements or not signed agreements.
It says prevailing wage.